Just Punjabi dekhte ho, sahih dashka nu mere vello pyaar bari. Satshyakal, thora swagat program, ajda mudda de vich, main thodi host Ashmita. Sare ya nu shahad program de vich ek varhi fir swagat kar de ya. Kal de program to bad, si ek cheez nu bar bar thod naal fir dohra re ya. Edi importance hor bhi badgi hai ke jado bhi koi da bhayanak tragedies hundee ya saadi community de vich and si is cheez na samthi rakde ya ke innu rokya ja sakda si agar saade law maker, saade elected officials sai time te sai decision lande ya paishe de influence undera ke na kam karde but jada community de welfare le, lokha de benefit le kam karde, the huji cheez ha prevent ho sakdi ya. So us hi cheez nu hor support karde, ek varhi fir minnu khushi ho rhi hai ke si thod naal local level de politics bare aj gal karan ja re ya. Because paave saadi apni community de pechhan huye, paave saanu saade local elected officials di pechhan di gal jado andi hai. Local level te thodi involvement, te thodi awareness hi o pehla kadam hai jo saanu aage progress te wal lake ja sakda. Jado local di gal andi hai, once again is sal kafi vadi elections, races ho re ya. Vadi bhi ho re ya, middle level te local level bhi races ho re ya. In sare ya de vich tu si jaroor aap di involvement bare jankari pa ke khud involve ho vo and khas karke jado si local di gal karde. Paave in races bare jada jankari ni thon nu sundi, vadi media te, american mainstream media te but thodi local news stations, thodi local jo you know resources han, una de vich jankari jaroor majood hundee hai. And aj si thodi ji eh huji hi information thod naal share karan ja re ya. Khas karke Arizona state nu la ke, jo ke is sal de midterm elections de vich ek bahut hi important ki swing state banan jaari. The Arizona de vich har ek tanah de elections ho re ya, but aj jo saade guest han, saad naal jode ya. Chandler city, the city council de election nu la ke. So please join me in welcoming our guest for this evening, Ms Farhana Shifa. Farhana ji, welcome to the program, Satshyakal, good to have you.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Of course, Ms Shifa Farhana, you're running for Chandler city council in Arizona. We've covered a lot of folks that are running for the various open seats out of this very important swing state. Arizona was a swing state in 2020 when the federal election, the presidential election took place. It changed the balance of power in the senate for the democrats and now we have another midterm. Looks like the pendulum will swing the other way, but Arizona in any case will be a deciding factor. And while not a lot of attention is given to city council races, they're the ones that make the most difference in the day-to-day lives of folks that live in any given city. And so before we get to all of your wonderful campaign and policy platforms that you're proposing, should you win city council for Chandler? Before all of that, tell me a little bit about yourself and what brought you to this point that you are now running for city council?
Thank you Ms Ashmita and thank you all of the audience out there who is watching tonight. I'm Farhana Shifa and I was born in Bangladesh. I did my master's degree in London. When I was there, my navy veteran husband is the reason I anchored to Arizona and put my food in Chandler and grew my family over here. So Chandler city is one of the most steady, beautiful, economically stable and a job hub in a safe and secure city in the United Nations. So I was totally happy raising my kids here, not politically tense the way we went through the tension in nationwide or the statewide. But this election cycle, two of our very good incumbent, they turned out. So that's why I was encouraged by the mayor and other city councils to look into the opportunity to serve the city. And I have been serving the Chandler city as a art commissioner six years now and I do a lot of community development work and charitable work. So my heart is for service to the people. And when I got that call, serve in a political capacity or elected official, to me it had no difference because I would be serving the same people in a different role. So I said, boy, this is my backyard, right? My city. So I said, okay, I will step to that level and I will try to do the best, be the voice of the people and represent Chandler with a servant heart.
That's a great introduction background and certainly one that, you know, we hope all local politicians and aspirants bring to the table. Farhana, you know, obviously Chandler is one city in a great large nation, but it has certain attributes that a lot of other cities in the United States share and maybe even the same issues that matter to voters, right? You're talking to our nationwide audience who may be wondering, well, at the local level, you know, what can a city council member do for me and my day-to-day problems? Especially in middle America, right? Where minority communities maybe have some unique challenges as opposed to, you know, some of the bigger cities like New York or in California. So tell me about the things that you think matter most to the residents of Chandler and how they may be similar to a lot of the same needs that folks in other small cities have throughout the country?
So let me define you first, how the government works in USA. So like any other country, we have city, we have a state, we have a nation and all these areas, the government, we have their own jurisdiction. But the beauty of America is the government of each area, they're independent body, they're the decision maker. So that city can deny the state opinion, state can deny the federal opinion and have their own regulation if needed. So that much authority they have. So that's why elected officials are very important because you're giving that much authority to a person. And that's one aspect. And second aspect, city level work in our country like USA is, I say more of a maintenance job, like your everyday life maintenance. So do you have a good road to drive? Do you have a parks and recreation center to take your family out and be there? Or do you have a safe neighborhood that you are not having any burglaries or any theft happening or your life is not threatened? And then do you have the clear water when you open the tap? The sewage water, the electricity, the traffic signal, like you name it. Like if you're the house owner, then where is your home, the zoning? Do you have this regulation applied to you or not? The schools, where they are, the business are coming, where they're gonna place their business? And keeping that vibrant, this whole city, because people wants to live in a place where I can go to work close by, come back to work happy and I'm not worried about my kids being in the school and play outside. And then when I'm at home, I can buy food and put it on my table and I can pay the bills. And those are the common needs of the people. And city is the closest government who take care of all these business and provide the quality of life. So in, obviously, city government does take some policy decision too, but those policies are very connected to people's everyday life. Not like hypothetical regulation, but like, okay, can you take the right turn in this street or left turn that street? With the traffic bodies, they do that. Or even the recreation, can you have this kind of program or not? So Chandler city is grown pretty big within last hundred years. From 10,000 population now is 280,000 population. So and the beauty of Chandler city, we are very diverse and we celebrate those diversity and embrace those differences very open-heartedly. So 13%, almost 13% of the population is Asian population. So that's another aspect of government. We need to have the representation of our community and it's always the passive education. Because how the community leave, learn and feel safe? If you don't have that representation, then you miss out from making decision.
Of course.
So having a seat on the table and representing the communities in a proper manner, that's another aspect. So it's more likely, there is a joke, if anyone see the pothole, they call a city council person. You need to fix my pothole, so that much close to people's life.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, you know, translate that for viewers. Ke jao tu si drive karde, thon nu khadda desda hai. Us khade de vich bar bar thodi gaddi ardhi hai, ya thoda tar flat humda hai. Tu si jao thodi atta ho jan di hai, tu si kin nu call karde ho? Police nu ni call karde, road maintenance nu ni call karde, of course not. Tu si call karde ho, aap de city council member nu, because naad naal thodi direct connection hundee. And once again, that's the kind of day-to-day stuff. But a lot of the things you're talking about, Farhana, require a kind of multi-ethnic coalition and community work to make happen, right? When we talk about Chandler, as is true in a lot of other cities in the United States, where you have small pockets of minorities living in a city, you know, maybe that small pocket of one community can't get much done on its own, but when those small pockets come together, they are greater in number, greater in power and influence and now all of a sudden, they have bargaining power at the table to ensure these day-to-day things, right? Whether it's parks, you know, for their families, safer schools for their children or other regulations that affect their quality of life in any given town or city. I want to talk about this, especially your experience building these multi-ethnic coalitions and why now we need them more than ever as tragedy has struck once again in a very particular type of community. But at the end of the day, it could have been any of our small communities in any city in the United States. And I'd love to hear your thoughts on that. We have to stop for a quick commercial break here, Farhana, don't go anywhere. Viewers, tu si bhi istana saad naal jode ro, ke istana tu si baaki communities naal jod ke, paave tu si kithay virende ho, aap di power, aap di influence vada a sakde ho, jethay tak political involvement di gal andi ho, di gal karange, break to us bar. Break the bar, more hazarun, tu si dekho program, ajda mudda. Si hamesha apne aap nu ek minority di minority gindaya. Ke lokha nu saade skin da color vay, ke shaad de andaza huye, ke si Asia to kisi part de ande hai ya shaad India to ande hai. But us to aage ja ke, agar una nu ek specific tanah di jankari awareness huye, tad hi una nu pata huye, ke si Punjab to haan, ya Sikh haan, ya Asia de vich, Pakistan to Bangladesh to Nepal to ande ya. But jethay ni ignorance se saanu jeen ni pendi hai. Is ignorance nu, of course, ek pashe ho, si jankari awareness te community building work de naal jaroor dur kar sakde. But duje pashe ho, jado kam karan di gal andi hai, there's nothing better than numbers. Numbers do the work, they talk for you. And jethay saadi community shaad numbers na ainavde hon, agar si baaki communities naal jod ke, aap de agenda taya karde ya, te all of a sudden, saadi numbers, saadi power, saadi influence, visibility, ye saari cheez ha badde jan di ya. Te ek khas karke net states, te you know, middle America de sharan de vich, jethay saadi community di ginti halen ni vadi ni hai, jini si New York ya California ya midwest de kuch sharan de vich hundee vekte ya. Othe saadi community kis tanah coalition building de naal, baaki minority groups naal ral ke ki kuch kam karde. The onee bare thodi jankari den li, saanu join kare. Arizona to, city council candidate Farhana Shifa. Ek varhi fir, Farhana, welcome back to the program, so good to have you. We're talking about Chandler, Arizona, a city like many in middle America, where minorities have an uphill battle, but it's not impossible. You know, we can get the work done, but we have to be smart about it. And one of the smart things to do is to work with other minority groups. This is something you already do regularly. So I want to hear a little bit about how you work with other minorities, because you yourself are Bangladeshi, but you work very closely with the Sikh and other ethnicities. I want to hear what you're doing in Chandler and maybe, you know, we can take some lessons away from this for folks listening to us in other parts of the country.
Ashmita, you already mentioned a powerful point when you were talking to the viewers, that the numbers comes. So when is, alone we can do such a small part of the work, but when we are handful of people, we can even move the mountain. So Asian community in USA, when we define Asian, probably 30 plus ethnicity or countries are part of that big belt. But when we try to define who are those Asians, then again we become segmented. And you mentioned that Indian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Korean, Chinese, Japanese. And we tend to live in our own bubble, in our comfort zone and we don't try to break the norms. So it's not only mainstream, doesn't mean just mingle with the cookie part of that process. So I will give you an example. In 2013, we created SEGOP Asian American Coalition and 17 different vote members from 17 different ethnic groups or the Asian community groups, we are together. We were unknown to each other. I didn't know the Vietnamese community culture, Korean community culture, know a lot better the Indian culture, but not even Pakistani culture enough. So what we did, we started going to each other event and each other territory as a group and creating image that we are all together and we are not different. And Asian community, we love friends regardless who you are, that's our character. We respect families regardless you are my close one or distant one. So when we created that bond, slowly the boundaries started going down. People started mingling with each other, learning with each other. So from there, we had another vehicle to bring the communities together. 21st February is International Mother Language Day. So Bangladesh community celebrate that with pride because of their rooted history with language movement. But here in Arizona, we started bringing different language group that's beyond the Asian community and the performance, putting them on a stage and bringing the all communities under one roof. Like normally, it grew that big, we do 21 to 25 different language, 150 performers in one day and 600 to 800 audience. So we grew that big and next year Chandler city will be partner, will be having open ear, more bigger program. So I'm keeping that as an example. So the similar way, another initiative we did, direct flight from Arizona, Phoenix to Asia. And that's so needed for us, those who live in west coast, we have to travel to east coast, some of the state, either Chicago or New York or LA, then fly out. So that movement, Pakistani community started and got a little bit of help from the Bangladesh and Indian community, but it died off because the number. The number and the network wasn't enough. Then we took the different approach after a couple of years. One of our friend, Korean community, he become the chair and he did the survey with the people, three destination, either Japan or Korea or Thailand, oh sorry, China, three areas. And then all this feedback, people's feedback, because those signatures were kind of numbers for participation.
It's data, it's hard data that you can put forward a resolution or proposition on.
Right, and then, so we figure out the Korea sale will be much more viable and profitable for both side. So that is on the process of happening. And then Indian community wanted cricket field in Chandler. So and boy, who doesn't like cricket, right? But if it was just Indian community demand, then it would be discarded so quickly, it's one community demand. So I advise them, bring Bangladesh community, because they have too much of cricket team playing in Arizona. And then bring Indian community, different states, not just like one state, not just Telugu, Tamil or Gujarat or this community, that community, all India together and promote other cricket teams or form the new cricket team. So now with that number and volume, the proposal is going through and hopefully in near future, it's gonna happen. So even the tiny little thing, previously Chinese community wanted senior center. Again, that was overheard because the number wasn't good enough. And then when they bought the strength of that, then it became possible. And I will just insert another data. Asian community, when I say Asian community, I will exclusively say South Asian community, like Indian, Bangladeshi, Pakistani. They are very successful in their job, kids are very smart in academic progress and lot of non-profit charitable work led by these community leaders. We are the biggest contributor of the society and the system.
Absolutely, and have a large disposable income.
But we are not the biggest change maker in the political system or the government system. Because, one data will open your eye, in Chandler, we have 10,000 registered Asian voter. Only 2,800 people vote.
Oh my goodness, that is abysmal. Disappointing would be a soft word to use here, that is absolutely unacceptable. 10,000 eligible voters within the Asian community in Chandler and only 2,800 participate. This is exactly the kind of thing we need to change and I'm so glad that you're on our program talking about this. Farhana, you know, this week has been overshadowed by the horrible tragedy that took place in Uvalde, Texas, just a couple of days ago, the mass shooting at the elementary school. And while it's important to show solidarity and, you know, offer our prayers and sympathy with those families that are facing an unsurmountable loss right now, the reality of living in America is that it could happen to any family in any city. Just last week, we were sharing news about Buffalo and the mass shooting at the grocery store there, which targeted African-Americans. You know, this year, the Sikh community, you know, recognizes several horrible anniversaries, whether it's the Gurdwara that was attacked in Oakland, Wisconsin or the FedEx facility in Indianapolis just last year, where there's such a large Asian population, you know. So tell me a little bit about the importance of, once again, coming together with other groups in our community, no matter where we live, to bring about the kind of change that can prevent things like this, these kind of shootings, these kind of tragedies from affecting us over and over again?
It's so hard to express because last night, just looking at all those pictures of all the victims, so innocent faces, is overly heartbreaking. And loss of a life is, you cannot compare that loss with anything else. And it just brings a question, why, right? Like my mother lives with me and I have 12 years old and a 14 years old. And my mother was telling me, so you don't know where they're safe. So that's kind of insecurity, doesn't matter, it didn't happen to your city. But we all suffer with that kind of dilemma. But here is the thing though, don't be afraid to report if you see in your community if anyone having the odd kind of attitude. Because culturally, we Asian people don't want to admit the mental health issue. If we see it, we try to hide it from the people. But it's pretty normal and with the complexity of the life, kids are suffering more, people are suffering more. Be open about it, seek help and try to help others. Maybe you are seeing in someone, that person or that family is not our. Don't humiliate them, but try to make them our and give them resources. And sometimes, because the recent incident and the shooter, he was showing indication over and over. It's a small city, everyone knows each other, but nobody, nobody took a bold step to talk about it and we paid the price. So that's one aspect of it. But the other thing I will address, Ashmita, everyone wants to be accepted, the way we are, we want to be celebrated and accepted. We need to have the similar mind to understand others. So rather than being fearful or feel like I'm the victim, he or she doesn't understand me, we need to be proactive and create the bridge. Because unknown is always fearful. Yes, we look little different and we like curry when we cook, the smell goes in the neighborhood. But invite your next-door neighbor, let them try the food. They might fall in love with that rather than complaining, why my neighbor is cooking a smelly food, right?
That's such a simple, that's such a simple advice, simple example you've used, but it's so powerful, right? I think it's very true in the Desi community, we feel very much, we sometimes isolate within our own community. You go, you hang out with other people exactly like you from your community at your work or your place of worship, you know, in your family, in your social gatherings. And you think that, oh, if you have everything you need there, you don't need to interact with anybody else. But sometimes that creates the kind of disconnect, which eventually leads to acts of hatred. You know, it's so powerful, even if it's a simple invitation to lunch or dinner to neighbors.
I will insert that, I went to Gujarat a few times, even though it's not my faith, but I didn't feel disconnected. Because I went to Buddhist temple, I went to mosque, I went to church of Iglesias or Elia's church or the Korean church, Chinese church. You know, when people pray, it doesn't matter who they pray to, they pray the same thing, the well-being of others.
Absolutely.
That's the connection, like people have more similarities than differences.
Yes.
So if we started seeing that, I think we value and love each other in a different manner and the fear of unknown will not be there and we can create better society.
I could not agree more with this philosophy of yours. It's about finding those things that connect us instead of fixating on things that divide and separate us. Farhana, I don't have a lot of time left here unfortunately. In closing, once again, you know, you're running this campaign. It's a very important time in this country's political trajectory, but certainly in Arizona. Is there any information you can share with our viewers before we say goodbye regarding your bid for city council in Chandler, Arizona?
Thank you, Ashmita. Viewers, if you're living Chandler, please do vote for Farhana Shifa on August 2nd for when the primary election happens. And if you don't know, live in Chandler, don't know anyone in Chandler, but you can still promote my website or my Facebook page or any other media materials and make your friends our, their friends will know me. That's where we can have an organic way of communication, you can help me with that. And also, if you live in Chandler, please do call me, text me, email me, connect with me, and we can join hand-together and we can make this city better together. Because voting, vote is not just enough. Holding the elected people accountable is part of the voter's job. So it's a teamwork and continuing process. So if you are living in Chandler, vote for Farhana Shifa. If you don't live in Chandler, find a voter in Chandler.
Wonderful, wonderful call to action. Once again, you know, the first step is to get involved in the process. And so I'll reiterate, make sure you vote. Farhana Shifa, candidate for city council from Chandler, Arizona. We wish you the best of luck in this campaign. Do come back and join us with any updates from your race or your town. Great having you on the program this evening. Satshri Akal.
Thank you, thank you.